Want to kind of get you.
Good evening, everybody. Like to call this regular meeting, the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees to order on Tuesday, November 7 at 6:30 PM. Call the roll, please. Here.
Here.
Like to ask everybody to join us in honoring the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I will move to approve the minutes for the October 11, 2023 special trustee meeting. Second by Augustine, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the October 17, 2023 regular trustee meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move to approve the minutes for the October 27, 2023 special trustee meeting?
I have two changers. In the Google Drive discussion, towards the bottom, it says trustee after all trustee Swedek stated that he feels this could be a good tool and that he's okay doing a test trial run. And then it says for this after Kimball opt out process has been completed next week, I do not recall that being discussed. Just that we said that we would go ahead with the test run trial. So I would recommend omitting after the Kimball opt out process has been completed next week.
Strike that.
Okay. And then the second page towards the bottom when we're talking about the December 5th meeting, I would recommend adding in, we will still hold a regular meeting that night at 6:30. That's not included in that paragraph.
We were just discussing it up and we made a final decision.
I thought we had decided to hold the, we were going to do an abbreviated meeting, a special meeting at 9:30 in the morning. We said we're going to hold a special meeting that was going to be abbreviated at the school at 9:30 in the morning that we could have all of our department heads kind of give an overall top line view of what they do. And then we would announce the winner of the Christmas decorated to the children since they are going to be the ones voting for it. And then we said we would still hold our regular meeting that night at 6:30.
I actually have it on my agenda for tonight because I didn't think we made a final decision on it. I think we talked about doing both, but we didn't make a formal decision.
I was under the impression that's what we were doing. A short meeting during the day and the regular meeting at night.
And we can abstain from voting on these and go back and watch the recording if that's what we would prefer to do and that we can still come to a decision tonight on it. We can re-discuss it, but I don't want to, if we're not in agreement with what was said, then it might be better if we abstain from approving this.
Withdraw them.
Okay.
It, it, in the evening additional like, I mean, these aren't a vote.
Right.
Is that basically what the conversation was?
Yes.
Okay, so it was discussed, it called a regular meeting.
You got it.
Regular time and place.
You got it.
Okay.
Move as amended?
Okay.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Martha.
Do you want to pop up those new hire?
Martha, would you care if we do the new hire first before we go to you? Okay, David?
Good evening. Request the motion to hire Stephen Motta as a full-time probationary patrol officer, starting pay class P1 of the Union Collective, Barbie and Greenery. Mr. Motta's tentative start date is Monday, November 13.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, let's see, need a roll call for this? No, all in favor?
Aye. Any family that wants to come up and get a picture, you can come through. Although we're not very far away in this room.
Repeat that for me, aye, Stephen A. Motta, aye, Stephen A. Motta, resign only swear, I swear that I will support the Constitution, the Constitution of the United States.
I'll support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge my duties.
Faithfully discharge my duties.
As an officer for the police department.
As an officer of the police department.
Of Hinkley Township in Medina County, State of Ohio.
Of Hinkley Township of the State of Ohio.
Congratulations, young man.
Family, he's, he's going to go with the officer, go for the PD. If you want to go with him, they'll give you a tour of the building and you'll kind of get an idea of where.
They probably want to see this, Dave. Thanks for coming, everyone.
Very comfortable in here, isn't it? Just cozy. What's, it is warm. What's in there to stand such?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
He has a pretty good fan club.
Yeah.
Fiscal Officer Catharwood.
Except those, uh, great notifications I have.
All right. So I will move to adopt resolution number 110723-01, reallocating $6,000 from 2031-760-740-0000 machinery, equipment and furniture to 2031-330-351-000 electricity and $2,000 from 2181-130-150-0000 compensation of board of commission and commission members to 2181-130-319-0000 other professional and technical services.
Second.
Seconded by Ashroll, all in favor? Aye.
Roll call.
Yeah, uh, and just to inform the board that the, the first one is due to higher electrical costs of Roman Bridge because of the additional subdivisions that we've added on as far as lighting. And then the second one is to deduct money from board and commission zoning business game numbers and to pay for
I'm sorry, call the roll in. Yes.
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 I will move to pay the bills in the amount of $298,642.19. All in favor?
Aye.
Chief Senator. Nothing else. Service. Okay.
I'll have one thing, request for appropriations for replacement tires for truck number 26 through North Gabley at a cost of $1,789.66.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
If you'd care to depart, you're welcome.
I have two really quick things while I'm here. One was the cemetery. Do I see the request for appropriations to purchase the MagnaTrak 200 series magnetic locator through Amazon Prime that costs $5.99 replacing the broken metal detectors and anything you want to add to that?
It just says in place.
Okay. That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the second thing real quick is the conversation about the subdivisions and cul-de-sacs. And like, I just wanted to get your opinion on this. It's under zoning. It's my second agenda item. We have two different types of language. On March 3, 2020, we amended our cul-de-sac language that center islands within township roadway arrays are forbidden. This was are forbidden in permanent cul-de-sacs unless permitted by motion of the trustees, forbidden. In our new April 18, 2023 subdivision standards, it says that center islands with proper drainage are required in permanent cul-de-sacs when a homeowner, homeowners association accepts maintenance. So we've got two different languages. And I just want to make sure we're on the same page moving forward because we've got another cul-de-sac coming up in hollow at Willow Lake. And they want to know if they have to put in a cul-de-sac or not. And if we are going to move forward with the subdivision standards from April 18, 2023, we really should rescind the March 3, 2022 motion, which says that cul-de-sacs, the center islands are, are forbidden permanent cul-de-sacs. This one says they're required.
Didn't the board approve the current subdivision standard?
They did.
Which replaces the other.
But we never rescinded this movement. So we've.
I thought you, you made the motion. I have to go back in the minutes, but I recall that, that the other was superseded. I, I thought the word superseded were, were used and I'd have to verify that.
Okay.
For the board.
Okay.
But what, once again, to your point, the board needs to decide what they wanted to say.
Yeah.
But my recollection is that all former subdivision standards are needed by the motion of that one. You can only have one.
Yeah. Well, we beat that up pretty good. I'm pretty sure we're on board with the, the latest version.
And you have said that you prefer to call stack.
We do.
Or not, it's the call stack. Okay. I don't see anything about supersede, but I already read it. Thank you. That's all I need to do. Yeah, because you can't have two, right? It's conflicting for some department. That's it?
Monique, can I interrupt you for one second? If Vicky wants to know, is the movie being recorded? Or should it be recorded also?
Uh, it should be recorded. We hit record to the cloud. Can she hear it?
Yeah, she can hear it and she can do it.
Okay.
Theoretically.
The very important words there.
Keith Grossenbaum.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Request appropriations for $1,570 for the education tool preventive maintenance through our system.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Next request appropriations, I take see $3,500 for 14 50 foot sections of inch and three quarter fire hose with couplings from fire safety services. We did not get the grants for fire hose that we applied for the last two years. So we're going to slowly start doing this. Uh, we looked at a bunch of different hose manufacturers. Uh, it went down from friction loss to nozzle reaction, how much nozzle is in there? Um, this was the middle of the road hose that we really liked because it laid really flat in the hose bed. It had the least amount of nozzle reaction and it had the least amount of whip. The other, the two other companies were almost double pricing on, on this. Because it's big branding hose that's used in big cities around the world, so.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, request appropriation for $130 for a flow testing of our Scotts rip pack that we have through MES.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
Can you just refresh my memory on this one, please?
This is our, our rapid intervention air pack. If a firefighter goes down, we, we drag this in there. So they come out and they do the maintenance on the bottle and the regulator system and the mask on that pack.
Thank you.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, request to approve a donation of a gas powered positive pressure fan that has no value to the fire department due to its age to the Medina County Career Center Fire Training Program. This fan has been out of service sitting in storage since about 2019. And I know the fan was there before I got hired on the fire department. So it's well over 26 years old. Uh, small engines at the, uh, career center is going to have to do a tune-up on it to get it to work. But the career program or the fire program does not have any fans to use.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, next is request to list engine 312 on Gov deals with a reserve starting price of $75,000 from December 1 to December 15. Engine 312 is a 2005 KME printer fire apparatus. VIN number is 1K9AF42836N058054. Has about 13,000 miles on it. We had the LED light system replaced a couple of years ago. It passed its pump test. We have all the records on it, uh, the ladders that, that came with there going on it are being sold with it. Um, so we think it's good price. I've been looking through Gov deals and some used fire apparatus uh, websites and, and it seems like it's a good starting place, place. I've seen trucks that have more miles go for a lot more than that. So I'm hoping there's a bidding war as if anybody remembers when we had listed last one, we listed it for like, I think like 8,000 or $10,000 and it, it went up to like 25,000 the last day. So, or right around there. Um, so we think this will, uh, we should get some good money for it. We're hoping.
Well, I appreciate you, um, doing the research on that and knowing where you started off at. So so moved.
Resolution. Can you make that resolution?
Resolution. Second.
Second. Discussion. Call the roll.
Sweater?
Yes.
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 Request move firefighter EMT Stephen Tunic and Joseph Ziwak to their full pay of $1,654 per the organizational minutes.
So moved.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Um, just let everybody know, November 18th, 19th, we'll be doing our line burn on Sun Road. Um, weather permitting still, we started getting prep work done. Home Depot donated some plywood to us. Today I have another instructor coming in on Friday to help us do some prep work. Um, I will post some stuff online. The cemetery, we reached out. They will be allowing parking. The big cemetery will allow parking just as long as there's paths that, you know, visitors to the cemetery can get in. Um, and then it's on the south side of the road.
We had a good audience for the last one.
Yeah, we did. Yeah.
And good weather.
Yeah. I've been trying to watch the long-term outlook, trying to figure out if it's good weather or not. Fingers crossed. It's looking like it. Uh, next is the blood drive here, uh, November 18th. We're at the old, in the old base. Our annual boot drive for the seniors and, uh, families of Hinkley is November 25th, 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the center of town as we always do. Um, our annual Santa parade will take place Sunday, December 17th, 10:00 AM till 3:00 PM. Uh, we'll be posting the map on social media, um, with our Santa parade, our, our trailer that we made and the trucks and everything else going through, through, through the township. Um, it was fourth year, I think, third, third or fourth year. So it should be a good time. And last but not least, um, request move firefighter EMT Andy Toth to the chief in zero position at our, our, of 1880. Per the organizational minutes, a little bit about Andy Toth. He's been with our fire department for 19, oh, I'm sorry, almost 10 years. Um, he's in medic school. He finishes medic school, um, mid-December. Uh, he is a class A CDL driver. Um, he owns his own landscape company. So he has small engine and repair, um, repairability. Um, so, and he was the only one that put it out to the department. He was the only one that had interest in it. So I'd like to move into that position.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye. You tore through that pretty quick.
I did. It was just a lot of announcement. That's, that's what it was.
Uh, zoning.
Oh, we already tackled the cul-de-sac questions. So just wanted to give everyone, uh, the board trustees a heads up that we have devised new internal systems with all of the department heads and we get a, um, a scope of work that's coming to the planning commission. I've created a document that will go to police, fire and service for them to review and type in their comments. And then Suzanne will then put those comments into the planning commission just so that we keep everything organized and work collaboratively. So just a heads up on that. And that's all I have for zoning.
Cemetery.
Cemetery, we have some deeds here. Do I have two witnesses from the audience?
Chuck's here, isn't he? I thought, I thought I saw him.
That, see now we nominate you. It's, that's how it works. And can I get one more witness?
Need a pen? Now Jack brings his on.
I actually was asking for that instead of, no, I have one.
I actually have two today and I normally have to deal with them.
Yes, that's it. Thank you so much. All right. And then just a quick update for the trustees. Um, Suzanne and I have been working to obtain quotes on the shale roof at the Maple Hill Holding House. Um, doesn't look promising. We thought we might be able to just go in and repair this roof, but because the shale is so old, it's extremely fragile and we might have to do a completely new shale roof. Um, before we explore that option, I wanted to see if the trustees felt that shale would be the best suited um, for this endeavor. Obviously it would coincide with the historic nature of the building, but it may be more costly.
There's, um, if you and Suzanne are looking into it, um, I believe there is now, um, what is the word? It's not composite, but they make, um, like a slate. It's, um, it's not actual plate.
Manufactured, manufactured.
Right. Um, that had, it's supposed to have like a 50 year warranty, something like that. Cause we lived with that for my house. So maybe look into that so that it still looks that way, but maybe, um, not as costly.
Okay.
If you don't mind looking into that.
Just whatever, are you in agreement?
Yes.
I will let Suzanne know. We will work collectively on it. Thank you. That's all I have for cemeteries.
Hey, we'll move into the trustee section. Uh, the first is the annexation appeal discussion. Um, the appeal was denied by the courts. And, uh, at this point, I personally don't see a anything that would benefit us moving forward. Uh, we've already invested $30,000 in the effort. It seems pretty clear cut that attempting to do an appeal to further it would not be successful in my mind.
Um, I see both sides of this. I, I see how, um, this, how quickly this was dismissed um, by Judge Hudson. Um, which I was under the impression from our attorney that this would take us into 2024 with this appeal process. But I also feel that, um, you know, we started this appeal based on the fact that he had won an appeal um, with Eaton Township, I believe it was, based on the same argument that we have. And that was with the ninth court, which that would be the next step that we would go to if we were to appeal this again. And I just wonder, I don't have my looking glass, you know, my crystal ball. So I'm not sure how it would turn out, but it just makes me wonder, we would go before the same court that he already went to, presented this exact same arguments and won. I, I just feel like we've come this far. This is literally the final step in the process. If it's denied, then there's nowhere else to go from this point, but we've come this far.
Trustee Augustine.
I, um, I appreciate your work on it, Jack, and meeting that mediation. I think that in order for me to have a sound decision as to how we move forward, I really would like to meet with counsel one more time to see what he thought of the mediation hearings and meetings and CFP, what he feels are best steps moving forward. Because to trustee Ashwell's point, we thought this was an endeavor that would go into next year and facilitated funding for that.
Is that what you would like to do, money?
Um, honestly, I would. He's a salesman, right? Like he's got to do a job. So I feel like if he comes here and meets us and, you know, bills us for the hours, he's going to say, yeah, of course you have a chance. So I, I would like to proceed with it, but I think that, I don't know that that's really worth the time for him to come out here because I think that was what he had said to us when we initially talked about appealing this the first time was that, um, his Eaton Township was based on the same argument. So just in the interest of saving a little bit of money and some time, I would say I don't necessarily know that it's worth meeting with him.
I'm just thinking that he was in some of the meetings that we weren't in and might be able to offer another perspective that we would not be aware of.
Martha?
I think it's incumbent on you to meet with him because you're going to have to get an idea of what his estimated costs are going to be for pursuing this. You guys still have two months of bills. They didn't have invoices, but we haven't been in the score. And you also have court costs of the current appeals. So I think you need to go into it and weigh the cost benefits of pursuing this and you need to get attention cost for it. And then, then you, the board and myself will have to sit down and find out where that might come from.
Make an actually a decision.
Okay. Um,
and you don't necessarily have to meet with him to do that, but you need to get that information from him somewhere.
Okay. I feel like you've had more contact with him, um, recently than anyone else. Are you comfortable reaching out to him with this or would you like me to?
Yeah, I can contact him. We'll set something up. All right, next is, uh, are we done there? Anything else? 25 River Road discussion.
Um, I spoke with, uh, the son-in-law about a week ago who was cleaning up the property and he's kind of turned his hands up in the air. He said, Monique, I worked on it for 11 days. I removed truckloads and thrown his hands up in the air. He said, Monique, I worked on it for eleven days. I removed truckloads and truckloads of scrap and he said it doesn't even make a dent with it. He was getting ready to remove, um, some of the vehicles and his father-in-law said, no, not ready to do it yet, you know, and he's been kind of pushing him off and he said at this point, he's just throwing his hands up in the air. I contacted, um, the homeowner, but no, no phone calls have been returned. So I would say, um, we have to proceed.
Well, and I mean, the prosecutor had been very specific with us that any, any conversations or communication needs to happen through the zoning office so that it can be documented. So if you can give that, that information to Tom so he can put it in his system, cause he's documenting all of those communications, that way we just have a record of it.
When did the prosecutor, I, I'm more than happy to send you the messages that I have, but I don't recall the prosecutor sending me anything.
No, that was something that she told me that I hadn't referenced in one of our meetings, that all communication is supposed to happen through the zoning office. Um, just so we can have transparency and a, and a clear concise path of the communications so there is some type of legal recourse on his end, we have a way to protect ourselves.
I'm more than happy to send you the text messages, Tom.
Thank you.
It's been primarily through text that we've done, so I can give you screenshots of the text messages.
Trustees, what, how do you feel about moving along with Twenty-five River Road?
My, first, if you want to do that, we have to contract with a salvage company. And I'm assuming the salvage company is gonna have to get a look at the property and to make, did they go in all the way in when they went? Did they? And they've given us a, a cost estimate and a
Yeah.
A contract?
Not a contract, but a cost estimate and then the next step would probably be then a, a contract.
So I think that's what's gonna have to happen first.
So then, what I mean, do I take from that, uh, one of those?
If you can get us a contract and make sure to go forward on it for, or a new estimate that has a uh, more recent date on it, we can move forward it, but if they don't do contracts, we can just use an estimate and move forward.
Then there'll be a motion to hire and once that's done, then we'll take care of signing the salvage titles, but not before that's in place.
We saw the titles being done separately, right? Or is that company removing all those vehicles?
That was part of the deal. He was gonna salvage them.
Vehicle, so I, uh, completed all of the, the affidavits for the salvage title. Uh, Mark should help him.
Yeah, and that's what, I mean, but they can't remove anything until you actually hire a contractor. Yeah, that was the, so as soon as you guys hire a company, then all the salvage titles will be released and the salvage company and then it would move forward.
Any further discussion there?
The earliest you guys can do that would be the next meeting.
Right, correct.
Are there anything time sensitive on those salvage titles, um?
Uh, basically I spoke with the salvage company, but I remember all of salvage and he, he, he's kind of looking at his schedule to find out, you know, when he can go in there to do it.
But he hasn't hired yet, so that's the, that, that's the kind of roadblock here.
Yeah, I don't think there's any.
Okay. Okay, and are you guys going to need any security?
Well, yeah, we're gonna probably need assistance from the eastern part.
That's gonna cost. Well, well, that's the contractor's going to have to reach out to us.
Okay.
Cause I don't have the staffing just to put people up there.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's, that's not gonna be a cheap endeavor.
Well, at, at the last, uh, trustee meeting, which I attended, I was hoping to discuss the
Right, as to what that looks like. It's just the first day or it's the whole process, um.
Yeah.
And so that is the decision for we'll have to make.
I would think the contractor would have to have a discussion with you to determine wh- what time of timeframe he's talking about in order for you to provide anybody.
Well, and one of the things that Tom and I have discussed is that the contractor has probably dealt with similar situations and may have a company as well for of the ability to handle certain situations.
Well, yeah, he's like self-contracting up.
Right.
Which was another concern too, because the salvage company owner, he, he, he was a little concerned with trying to get, gain access to the back of the property because property owner's, uh, present licensed vehicle is obstructing the the drive to gain access to the back of the property. So he wanted to know if he could legally move that vehicle. So I, I basically reached out to Heidi Carroll this morning to find out, you know, what the legal repercussions would be
Okay.
about moving that. Uh, she said she'll get back to me on that. She asked to do a little research on the
Okay.
Actually, you know, moving someone's vehicle.
Right. Makes sense. Well, thank you for your work on it. It's kind of a learning process. I don't think we've ever had one like this before.
Trustee Augustine?
Um, I just wanted to make the board aware that I did provide virtual testimony to support the repeal of the higher vice code five five oh one point one six oh. Uh, that was on my agenda at the last meeting and I felt as I wasn't able to make it, so just wanted to let you know. Um, Ohio Home Times Hero, the update on that is that the chamber is willing to help us, um, facilitate that. My current conversations are with Ohio Edison as to where this exactly would take place, because if you drive down Ridge Road, the poles, um, actually get closer, they're further away from the road. And so we want to make sure that it's a place that it can be seen, so it would probably be closer to town center. So I'm working with Ohio Edison on that. Um,
Something about, are you guys gonna charge for that?
Yes.
Then you're gonna have to figure. Okay, so nothing will go through the town. Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, Hinkley Elementary meeting discussion, we just had that discussion. Do you, we want to do an abbreviated meeting that morning? And then have another meeting that night, because typically it's just taken over the meeting for the, the day.
Uh, we talked about that. I would prefer to do as trustee Ashwell had said, something abbreviated that might be more attuned to those kids being there instead of boring them to death like we do to all these people. So.
They look very interested, actually. Especially that guy back there, in the blue shirt.
Okay. We all look at it. Um, the For former trustees, Rhodes and Shulte, um, Jack, I had some on my agenda before you responded. You said you want to know till what date for November nineteenth?
Till the end of next week.
I just, I want to make sure I give them enough time to have available for their families. Is there another day that works?
A, a, a weekday is better. The weekends are tough.
A weekday during the evening?
That'd be fine.
It's gonna be so dark though. If we do something in the evening.
That's what I'm thinking too, now that it's dark at five o'clock.
If you want to plan it for the nineteenth and if I can be there, I will.
Is noon still a good time? If we do the nineteenth?
Noon works for me. That, that day and that time worked for me. So I am, I mean, I think you were joking, but I mean, you could do a good Black Friday. I mean. Well then, project when you are giving these ideas.
Uh, people are off of work, I mean, that's one of the times, you know.
Just people might be traveling, that's.
People might be traveling, yep.
Might be shopping.
As well.
Might be shopping, but I mean, generally they're home by eleven o'clock in the morning from those Black Friday shopping trucks, right? I mean, would you want to do something like, like the twenty-fourth at like two or three?
That even, uh, Ray's widow works for the county. She's probably not gonna be off on the twenty-fourth. She's probably gonna be working.
Then, if that works for both of you, just go on, set it.
Okay.
It's my mind, okay, perfect. Thank you. I will contact the families. All right. And then the last two things, I got a, um, a request from some of, some people who have said that the girl softball fields at Colback need some work. And so I just wanted to make the board aware for future endeavors at Colback and maybe that would be a field that we might want to put a little bit of money into.
Um, and we agreed that we were doing all three fields. Wasn't Ra going to, we're gonna do two?
Yeah.
And Ra's gonna do the third one, so that's all of the fields.
So what are they doing?
They're doing complete conditioning.
Okay. And then lastly, I just wanted to see if we have a proctor schedule. I think it's kind of gone by the wayside and I text um, Jackson, every time I have a meeting, are you proctoring? And sometimes I get a response and sometimes I don't. So I'm just wondering if you can do kind of give me a heads up if there's a BZA meeting or there's only a mission meeting that we don't have a proctor, so I know to be.
Yes, it has gone by the wayside because we only have one proctor right now. And I had sent, um, an email to, I believe, both of you and Suzanne and, uh, Lynn a couple of months ago. When Jackson got his new job, he can no longer do Thursdays. So Thursdays are out. I did reach out to Lisa, who took the leave of absence from it. Um, and I just asked her if that was something that she wanted to um, come back to, or if this is something we should look at, maybe hiring a second proctor. And she said, I think she told me she should have an answer December fifth. Whether or not she will be coming back. So if, I, I would prefer to just, um, hang tight for another month.
Okay.
If you're both okay with that. I mean, when it comes to zoning meetings and BZA meetings, I'm more than happy to proctor.
Yeah, I have no problems either. I just need a heads up so that I'm ready to log in, so wondering. Perfect, that's all I need.
Did you have, were you planning on doing executive session?
No, I thought Jack does.
Okay, um, a reminder. The holiday light contest, everybody's going to decorate their home for Christmas and submit photos to the township. High resolution photos to be featured on our website. You can submit those, um, I should have written down the dates. You can submit those to the township, I believe, until November twenty-seventh and, um, the children at Hinkley Elementary School will be voting on the winner on December first. Um, just so you both are aware, I had asked Lynn if she would add this, um, to the website as, under the banner, just to remind people, submit your photos to us, high resolution. Um, wanted to mention it again, because our ad was kind of forgettable. That we
I did see it.
That we had.
I saw the website.
Kind of blended in, um, and then the Campbell rate reminder, um, all opt-out spots have been, um, completely filled. They were filled within the first day. Um, so just a reminder to you all that beginning February of next year, the new rates for the contract will be uh, sixty-nine ninety-nine a quarter plus three dollars and eighty-five cents for the fuel surcharge for a total cost of seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents a quarter for the unlimited trash and recycling. And then twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents a quarter plus three eighty-five for the fuel surcharge for the bag service, which would be twenty-six sixty-eight a quarter plus the cost of bags. And then a reminder that the Hinkley Holiday Market will be at Valley Air on Saturday, November eighteenth at nine AM. And all proceeds from, um, the bake sale and the basket raffles will be going to the Hinkley Police Association.
Good.
I'll add two of it too.
Thank you.
Um, the employee manual is still with the prosecutor's office. He's, uh, he says the final review should be completed before our next meeting. So it should be done by then. And although I thought it was a good idea to take the drug and alcohol policy out, he's recommending putting it back in. So I'm just gonna take all that information and insert it back in there because it's applicable only to the non-union folks is what. So I put, none of the content will change. It'll just be moved back into the manual. And I'll have that for you. Should have it for you for the next meeting for us to vote on.
Only two years later.
Yeah.
It's like the first thing, that was the first thing that was given to me two years ago, so.
The Cleveland Guardians have a ball field improvement grant, um, thanks to Martha and Monique for forwarding those, uh, uh, the information on it from a couple of the residents here. Judy and, what was the other one? Oh, you, okay. Um, and Ra is applying for that. And they asked me to draft a letter of support for them, which you should have a copy of there. And I asked the board to join me in signing that, if that's acceptable. And I will get this to him to submit with their grant application. Basically, it says they're good people. Yes, sir.
What's in it for the Guardians?
It's promoting youth sports. So they're, they're every, relative to baseball and softball and uh, the ball fields themselves. They, they look to get people interested in it. And if kids are interested in baseball, they want to go see games, you know, so.
Okay.
But it's a charitable organization. It's, uh, the Cleveland Guardians Charities, it's called. And they do a lot, they, uh, spend a lot of money doing that throughout, uh, the area.
Okay.
Sure. Um, townscape, township property landscaping treatment. We're currently with True Green. I just wanted to let the board know that, uh, they reached out and the renewal, renewal goes up like four percent. And, uh, if we were, would we ever pay in full, Martha? Prepay? There's a three percent discount. Not worth it? Okay. So that'll be coming due in the spring then, well, since we're gonna wait on it. Um, the donated property sign for, uh, Mr. Gibson's property. I did not get the quotes back from either company yet and, uh, but I should have something on the steel sign relatively quickly now. Um, and I also spoke with service department. They have the ability to create the frame for it, obtain the post and do the install. So it would be at a greater reduced cost versus the, uh, the, the ones that I, we had, were looking at commercially. And I think it'll still be a quality sign. And last, I would, uh, after we're done, I will move to go into executive session to discuss employee compensation.
Which employee?
Uh, the police contract.
Melissa, did you want to second that? I have Epstein.
Yeah.
All in favor? Right.
No. Epstein, sorry. Not, no. No, Epstein.
We just made the motion to go into executive session at the time that we do it.
That'll, we said at the end, so it's, okay, um, anything else from the board? Anybody from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening, guys. Uh, my name's Stuven. I'm with Congressman Max Miller's office. We've been heading to our Medina Township trustee meetings. Uh, the back half is here and we just come around and get constituent resource guide. Just give their phone number and things that we can do to help you guys get rid of trouble with federal government, passports, social security, things that
Well, speaking of Max Miller, and I forgot to mention it, uh, he's hosting a live television, uh, telephone town hall with special guest Bob France for constituents in Ohio's seventh congressional district at six PM on Wednesday, November eighth, which is tomorrow. So, um, it, it, from, from his, uh, It, it, from, from his, uh, email, participants be able to ask questions, provide feedback through interactive poll questions, and hear from Congressman Miller on issues important to them. Anyone interested in registering for the telephone town hall can do so by visiting Congressman Miller's website at maxmiller.house.gov event-rsvp. Or call the congressman's office at two zero two 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 five three eight seven six, or by dialing into the town hall at six PM. At eight seven seven two two nine eight four nine three, pin number one two 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 five six.
Ruben, I think you should fire her.
So, and I, I spoke with them direct, that's why I wanted to mention it, because I spoke with them directly, he said anybody's welcome to join that. If you have time to do it, I think it'd probably be worthwhile to see and hear some of the things he's doing. Anybody else from the public? Okay, we will go into executive session at seven twenty-two PM. Move to go into the exceptions. Okay, call the roll, please. Yes.
Abstain.
Uh, yeah.
What's that?
I think we're just gonna walk out here.
All right, move to come out of executive session at seven twenty-three.
Um, second.
Second, call the roll.
Swited?
Yes.
Yes. We need to do a second executive session.
We did. With a decision, yes, we decided. For, to, uh, advise counsel to proceed with the contract.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive sessions, uh, to discuss discipline of a public employee at seven twenty-four PM.
Second. Yes.
Yes.
Obviously, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
I hope you didn't say anything bad, because I don't think it's muted.
And it's when I'd like to make a motion to adjourn out of executive session at seven thirty-eight PM with no decision made.
Second.
Call the roll, please. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Nothing else for the good order, move to adjourn at seven thirty-eight PM. All in favor?
Aye.